Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of the Committee of the Whole for Wednesday, December 14, 2022. My name is Ian Morrison. I'm the Chair of the Committee of the Whole. I'd like to begin by firstly acknowledging that, welcome Michelle, that we are gathered and meeting in the territory of the Coast Salish people and want to also acknowledge we're in the homeland of the Kowachin people. I'd like to just remind everyone around the table and in the audience that if you've got electronic devices, you may want to make sure that they're on silent or vibrate or something along those lines. And with that, we have a full House of Directors around the table. Welcome everyone here today and those that are watching remotely. And that would bring us to Mr. Robbins, first item number one, approval of the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chair, a motion to approve the agenda as circulated?
Moved by Director Stone, seconded by Director Toparowski. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? None opposed, the motion carries. Item two, adoption of minutes. Mr. Robbins?
Recommendation is that the minutes of the Committee of the Whole meeting of November 23, 2022 be adopted?
Moved by Director Stone, seconded by Director Manhouse. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? If there are any opposed, none opposed, that motion carries. Mr. Robbins, item three, any business arising?
There is no business arising from the minutes.
That takes us to number four, Mr. Robbins, public input period.
Public input period. I'm not aware of anybody that sought to speak to committee online, but we turn to the gallery here, Mr. Chair, if there's somebody that wants to provide some input to the committee.
Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Directors. This definitely is a full house. My name is Susan Kaufman and I'm from Satlum. I wish to speak to R3, the CVRD telecommunications antenna policy. Previously, the Board adopted the TAS policy which provided a sound base for the CVRD-led public consultation process and would ensure that the Board would receive a consultation report directly from staff. The public was assured that the policy, including preferred telecommunication antenna placement wording, would be coming ahead of the MOPP. Today, we hear that the staff are recommending that the preferred sighting criteria be deferred until 2025, presumably after the adoption of the MOPP. The purpose of the policy was to give the public a voice directly to the Board, an opportunity for the public and the Board to inform the ISED and the telecommunications company that the CVRD does have a hierarchy of preferred sites. Mr. Chair, for the benefit of the new Board members, this policy came in part due to a contentious tower placement in Satlum. We learned that to gain the coverage needed for connectivity in rural areas via cell coverage, it will require a series of telecommunications antennas, and those will most likely be in residential areas. Ironically, those towers require connectivity to a server not provided by the current applicant. The staff report you have received weighs heavily in favor of telecommunications companies to minimize their costs and does not address the concerns expressed by the public. The need for cell coverage and the need for connectivity of home-based businesses and those working from home are twofold. There is also a strong desire for internet and fiber-optic connections not currently available. The report does not speak to the ability to use Wi-Fi calling from home, and pushing ahead with telecommunications antennas is a cost-effective avenue for those companies. And I would just like to speak to them, reference to North Kowachin. North Kowachin does have many rural areas that are also not served with cell tower coverage, but they do have that policy. Mr. Chair, the Board has previously acknowledged that unless time-sensitive or urgent in nature, the items from the Committee of the Whole need not go to the same-day Board meeting. I respectfully ask that this item be deferred to the next Board so that the public has an opportunity to review the discussions today and provide the Directors' feedback before granting a possible deferral of the citing portion of this policy. Thank you.
Very well done, Ms. Kaufman. You ended at the zero, double zeros. Yeah, he had the timer was going. Very well done. I think you may have your wish. That's one of the items I was referring to at the beginning of the meeting. Are there any other members in the gallery that would like to provide input to the committee today? Seeing none, number five, Mr. Robbins?
Item five are delegations. The committee has two delegations. The first delegation is from Our Couch and Communities Health Network and Island Health. I'll ask them to come to the podium and perhaps they can introduce themselves to you.
Welcome. You need to press the button on the, there you go.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board of Directors and Staff. First, thank you so much for facilitating our delegation at today's meeting. We're really, just with gratitude, really excited to be here on unseated couch and territory to speak to you about a project that's really close to our hearts. It's called Our Health, Our Community, and it's a regional health and wellness survey. And so myself, so I'm Vanessa Data and Dr. Shannon Waters. We will provide you a 10-minute overview of what the survey hopes to achieve within the Kowachin region, and we'll have time at the end, I think, to answer any questions that there might be as to the objective and scope of this regional health survey. There should be a PowerPoint. Is that available? Okay.
They're working on it.
All right, so the Our Health, Our Community survey, this is an initiative of Island Health as well as the Our Couch and Communities Health Network, which for anyone who might be new here, is a non-funded function of the CVRD.
So I was just reflecting as I was waiting in the gallery here, that the last time I was here with a full group of this committee was as we were just starting to shut down during pandemic. So it's very nice to be here on coming out the other side. So yeah, with regards to the survey we're talking about with you here today, this is a unique opportunity for the Kowachin Valley region. This survey has existed in the province for a number of years. Fraser Health Authority and Vancouver Coastal Health Authority rolled out this survey within the regions about four or five years ago. Pre-COVID, Northern Island and Interior Health Authority were really pushing to have a rollout within our areas, and then COVID happened and it kind of fell off the wayside. We have funding opportunities with Island Health called community wellness grants, and those have been going on for a number of years. During COVID, those funding opportunities didn't happen, so there was money from that opportunity, and we were able to advocate because of our relationships here in the valley with the Our Couch and Community Health Network and that we had shown there was a lot of interest with this region for the survey. We were able to grab some of that money to do this rollout, and so this is only happening in the Kowachin Valley region across the whole of the island. And what we're going to be able to do with this is get local-level data on health and wellness, on what's going on in our neighborhoods, on how things are happening in areas such as community belonging, for people who live in the valley who are 18 years and older. There is a standardized list of questions that have been part of the surveys in the other health authorities, but then we also have the opportunity here to create some region-specific questions in consultation together to answer questions that are specific for what we want to work on. Bit of more context is the survey is at about 80 questions. We can adjust that. When it was rolled in other regions, it seemed that that number of questions was reasonable for most people to respond to. And we also are looking at how many numbers of responses we need to really make this robust data that we can act upon, and we need about 4,500 for the whole of the CVRD, but we want to far surpass that.
So what value does this survey propose to bring to local government? So the goal of the survey is to produce results that identify the health status, health inequities, and priorities of Couch and Valley residents to support evidence-based decision-making around community health and wellness programs and initiatives, healthy community planning as well as the creation of health-promoting environments, healthy public policy development and implementation, as well as resource allocation and funding opportunities. And there's a lot of other ways in which data from this kind of population-level survey that can be applied for community good. And so just to provide some examples for context, we're drawing from the My Health, My Community survey that Dr. Waters just mentioned. So this was a partnership of Fraser Health, UBC, and Vancouver Coastal Health. The survey was operated from 2013 to 2014, but they were able to use the results throughout the region in the lower mainland for community good. So you can see some examples on your screen. HandyDart was able to take the data and reflect and identify gaps in their service and then update their service and allocation of resources accordingly to improve service in specific neighborhoods. City of Vancouver was able to apply the data to inform their healthy city strategy. Vancouver Division of Family Practice used the data to inform their GP for Me initiative, as well as the City of New Westminster used data to inform their Walk 30 Burnaby New West initiative, which was a local walking challenge that got residents out enjoying the physical landscape, getting some exercise, and making social connections. So there's a lot of unique ways in which data from this health and wellness survey can be applied, and I think it really speaks to the broader definitions of health that we can look at through the surveys. So we're not just looking at the absence of disease, but we're looking at all those lived in social environments, so whether it's housing, food security, transportation, safe sidewalks, so on, all of these components in our community that support individual and collective well-being and health.
So just to give you an idea of some of our priority areas right now within the Kowachin Valley Regional District that the survey could help inform our response on, I wanted to just highlight three areas. So first, I really need to talk about mental health and resiliency. Mental health is the number-one area that needs focus, no matter where we are in the province. The Kowachin Valley Regional District is no different. And while this was the area of highest burden pre-COVID, it's actually become worse as we've had the time going through COVID together. And this just shows a bit of a snapshot from the SPEAK survey that was out over the time of COVID, so we've had two rounds across the province. And what you can see here is some areas where we have had some concerning trends. So in terms of the sense of community belonging, that has gone down over this past time when we've been going through pandemic. People have reported less connection with friends, worsening mental health, and more feelings of helplessness. We can get more information on this as a Kowachin Valley region and really look at ways we can work together to help build some resiliency in this area, because if people living here are feeling more mentally well, they're more able to enjoy their lives and, you know, work together for the betterment of all. When I'm mentioning mental health, I cannot not mention the illicit drug toxicity crisis. We will be able to get some data to help us inform our response here. This here is a very sobering graph. It is looking at the number of deaths, and deaths are not the only impacts of the drug crisis, but this is just looking at deaths over the time since we've declared the emergency. And unfortunately, what you can see in the last bar here, which is for 2022, and this is data just up until the end of September this year, we are on track with 32 deaths in this region. We are going to be the highest number of deaths this year that we've ever had due to this crisis. I want to acknowledge some of these people may be friends or family members of people in this room or online. So this is an area we still need to put effort, and I will show in the bottom graph there, the orange line is the rate across the island, and blue is us here in the Kowachin Valley Regional District. So we're basically tracking along with what's going across the island at this point, really no better or no worse, but still very much an area we need to focus on. The last priority area I'll mention is that of what is going on with our climate. This past summer, really intense amounts of drought going on. We, some of you probably know, are still dealing with a drought in the North Island, in the Mount Washington area in December. Like, you know, things are really changing. We did a survey last summer as well as this summer. We'll have this year's results soon, but last summer, 16% of drinking water systems on the island had already reported they were dealing with shortages. Also, heat and how we've been impacted by heat is a big thing that we really didn't deal with on the island before, and now we're very much having to look at. So this graph here shows during our heat dome in 2021, that the middle circle on the island there shows that we had 25 deaths over the time period of the heat dome, and so we're really looking at how can we build our communities, what are the things we can do together to help decrease mortality for those who are most vulnerable? And then lastly, on the graph on the right there, this is looking at some of our impacts from our air quality. We have air quality issues in the winter at times because we do have a number of people who heat with wood, and so we can have air quality advisories. But also, we have growing situations in the summer season with wildfire smoke. So this shows, a couple of years ago, when we had one of our wildfire smoke events, you can see on the bottom graph that spike is showing something called particulate matter when it rises in the air, and you can see the red bars above it. That is people who are going to get Ventolin prescriptions filled for people who have asthma. We have a direct correlation of people getting those types of medications because it's harder to breathe during those times. So what can we do as a community to help decrease that vulnerability and create spaces for people to be able to breathe easier?
In terms of the project's scope, we have a one-year timeline. We started in September with survey planning and development. We hope to launch the survey in the spring and to report back results at the end of next summer. And throughout our entire timeline, community engagement is a key priority, which is really the main reason that we're here. We're not only wanting to inform the community that the survey is coming about, we're wanting to actively collaborate through all stages of the project, from how we're going to define our survey questions, to how we're going to analyze the data, to how we'll report and share results, and ultimately, how we're going to empower the community to put the results to community good, to create meaningful change. So, which brings us to our invitation to the Board here today is an opportunity to work together. We would like to seek the Board's input as to the priority questions that need to go into this survey. We're reaching out to all levels of government in the Kowachin region, as well as a broad diversity of community stakeholders, asking for you to submit five questions. I know five questions doesn't sound like a lot, but we can only ask about 80 questions in total, as Shannon noted. But we have a really easy-to-fill-out PDF that we can email to staff for the Board to consider, to identify what are your priority areas, what questions or data gaps do you have as a Board that you would like to see answered through this survey? Is this an opportunity for the survey to support your work so you can better serve your communities in the Kowachin region? As well, we would like assistance in promoting the survey. 4,500 participants is our baseline, and that is a really hard number to achieve through survey data collection, and we need to leverage the social media and the network resources that are available at our disposal. I would ask the CVRD Board to consider in the spring, when we launch our media kit, to share that with your networks.
Thank you very much. That was excellent, and I would, don't go anywhere. I'm going to go to committee members and see if we have any questions. Director Stone?
Just so we don't lose track, I wonder if it would be appropriate that we could refer this to staff for staff suggestions in January at a Committee of the Whole meeting, and then the Board can discuss what those five questions we'd like to forward would be. So if that's appropriate, I can wait.
Mind reader.
What's that?
Mind reader.
So I would move that the discussion for the five questions for the health survey, if that's simple enough, be forwarded to the first Committee of the Whole meeting in January for discussion as well as suggestions from staff.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Director Staples. Any discussion on that? Director Douglas?
And if I could, after, I'd like to speak to the delegation.
Absolutely.
We had the same presentation our last CAFS meeting and discussed the same topic of submitting our own questions in North Kowachin, but what I think would be helpful for the staff here is to see what the standard questions are going to be with the survey, because you don't, obviously, don't want to suggest five new questions that are already part of the survey.
Fair enough, and I think staff are hearing that. And can you provide us with some of your background?
Yeah, so we'll provide staff the fillable PDF as well as a sample set of questions from the My Health, My Community survey as well.
Excellent. And just thinking out loud here, is this something that the Electoral Area Directors would like to have a crack at as well? It might be a little different discussion. I see some nodding, so perhaps after we voted on this resolution, we could have another resolution to refer this to Electoral Area Services as well. Don't see any, I was going to call a question, and then we can go back to Director Stone. So I'm going to call a question on the resolution. Is everyone clear on what the resolution is? Great. All those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed, the motion carries. We'll go to Director Stone.
So, and I thank you for highlighting mental health challenges, because I think that even those survey numbers probably don't really speak to the level of mental health challenges people are facing. I know I've had a lot of conversations with, it can be business people, just a wide variety of community members, youth. Through my business, we have a lot of kids that come through there, and they don't even recognize that what they're experiencing is mental health difficulties, and they're not self-reporting in that way. But through conversation, it becomes quite clear that they're feeling hopeless and helpless, and especially with youth, when we look at the state of the world and the information overload that kids and all of us go through. You know, my advice to them is stop consuming, and that's really the best way to start, because, you know, I say we are what we eat, but we're also mentally what we consume. And with the prevalence of social media and the messaging that's designed to elicit sort of the kind of responses, it can be really damaging to people of all ages, but in youth in particular. So I just want to say thank you for that focus, because I think it's an underlying social determinant of health in so many ways as well. Like, I see it in different peer groups that, you know, the mental health affliction can lead to everything from eating disorders to other health problems. So thank you for that, and thank you for the work, because I think it's really important here that we try and create that sense of belonging. And now I see, you know, and I'm thinking about it, more masks here today. There's this feeling of people being pushed apart again, and I think that's really concerning, that we try and find a way to balance the mental health impacts with the sort of more direct health impacts of communicable disease management. Because I saw this summer when things relaxed a bit, and you could tell people were relaxed. Those community events where people came together was really a cure for what ails in so many ways, and I think it was spoken to in those four points that you made there. So thank you for that, and I look forward to working with the group to develop those questions. And just one point to Director Douglas is sometimes just strengthening the questions that they already find, that we're seeing that these five things are the priority questions, even if they are reflected in your already sort of put-together question list, might just show the importance of those questions as well. So all of our councils and stuff should bring that specific lens to our list. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Stone. Any other questions, comments for our delegation? Director Martman?
Hope I have that right. Thank you again for the presentation, and I look forward to having this rollout and anything I can do to help. Yeah, I'm here, and I think my community would be very interested. Do you see any of the questions being related to access to primary care physicians, or is it at a different level?
Yes, sorry. That's a good question. We've had similar questions before, and that's why we really wanted to highlight how this has been used in other regions. So I think it was in City of Burnaby. It was used to help inform the GP for Me program and some other, they were called primary medical homes at that time. Now we are talking about primary care networks. So the survey doesn't per se, it asks questions that can help inform the processes about what people are looking at in terms of access and what kind of healthcare needs might need to be prioritized. So certainly, it has been used to help push for and help improve some of those things around access, which is also a really big issue across the province right now. So I think, not completely directly, but definitely indirectly, it can help inform some of what we need and how we can help improve that in the region.
Follow-up?
And a follow-up. And the second thing was, I think you're probably aware, there's a hospital being built in this area, and I'm wondering again, how can this lend itself to helping with that in terms of information? And is it something that should be done to establish trends? So not just doing it this year, but the next year, and the next year, or every other year?
Again, great questions. So yes, it can help inform things like the hospital build. Again, not directly, but in terms of people who might have certain conditions or whatnot, and how we can help improve things in the community to help people be healthier in the first place. It can help lessen the burden of why we might need people to go into the hospital in the first place, and how can we have what's going on in the community be complemented by what's going on with the hospital. I was part of the new hospital build in North Island, the Comox Valley Campbell River Hospitals, and it was interesting. Everyone kind of thought, oh, when we have these hospitals with more beds, all our problems are going to be solved. And guess what? Within three days, those new hospital beds were over capacity. So we really need to look at how we're keeping people healthy in the first place, that we can lessen the burden on the places like our healthcare facilities so that we don't need, you know, as many of those beds for things people could actually probably be managed outside of hospital for. So it's strengthening everything out in the community to help buoy that process. And I'm trying to remember the second thing that you asked right now. All right. Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you. Point for Tim McGonigal. Yes, that's a really good point, because what we want to do with these surveys is see what do we need to put our focus on, focus on those areas, and see if we have improvement over time. So we'll be advocating strongly for this to be something that is repeated over time. We did do a previous version of this survey. Cindy's coming up.
Hi, everyone. If I may, if you go to the Our Couch and Community Health Network website, you will also see on there the Couch and Communities Health profile. And so for the past number of years, we've been collecting data on the social determinants of health for our region, not necessarily the survey in the same way. We did a small component of this in 2014, and this is a follow-up. But you can also find data on your communities in there that you can use as well. It's a great resource, and we're going to continue to build on that.
And if you're not getting their weekly update, you should subscribe. Any other questions? Director McLintock?
To the Chair, thank you for the presentation. Just curious what we'll be able to infer from the survey. Is it going to be randomized? Are we targeting, like, vulnerable populations? I know 10% of the population's a lot, but yeah, just curious about that.
Okay, so I would defer the question to our amazing epidemiology team at Island Health, but I'll do my best to answer your question. So it's a non-randomized sample, and it's quota sampling. So we have set targets based on your geographic regions, identifying a specific percentage of the population that we need to complete that survey in that region in order to produce quality data. And so, and then we're stratifying that by age, sex, ethnicity, and there's a few other qualifiers and risk factors as well, but all of that will be defined once we have our survey questions at hand.
And I'll just say, one thing we're going to try to do is using the census data, like, we'll get the population parameters for different regions and then kind of come at a target, like 4,500 for the CVRD, you know, a little undefined, but what is it at, like, different community levels, so that as the rollout is going on, we can let you guys know how close you are to target, and so that we could work together to promote, so that we can get data that's, you know, the best to try and work with when we have the results. get data that's, you know, the best to try and work with when we have the results.
Fantastic, Director Toparowski?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Vanessa, and thank you, Dr. Shannon Waters, and also thank you to the former, former person that used to sit in her spot, Vanessa, I sat at the, our Community Health Network and table, and it's amazing how much work can be done when the organizations can get together and hear and look at solutions on working in our community, at a community-based, and also advocating to the federal and provincial governments for funding, and when I say that, mental health and how, there was a stigma around mental health, and how people weren't, as Director Stone mentioned, when you speak to people, it's something that you don't realize, but you know that people need help, and the cuts to services from the provincial government many, many years ago is spilling out into our streets, and the stigma is still there, so it's really tough to maneuver through this, and the survey is going to help with that data locally, so we can actually advocate for those services directly here. Also, you know, I think about in our Couchin tribes' community, sitting at the table for eight years and looking at the effects of residential school, and the mental health of our members, and no services to help, and it's just really sad. You mentioned the water was 16%, is that island, you said regional, but is it across the island?
Across all of the island, yeah.
Also with the, working with the clean air, those things, like, I know the forest fires, when you looked at the graph, it said August, and those were when those spikes happened, and I know you came to North Couchin, you mentioned the heat dome deaths, and 25, that's just in our, in our regional area, that's really high, and...
That was including all of this island, so I will say that's including the Nanaimo area as well, not just the CVRD, but yes, throughout the central island, and it is incredibly high.
Okay, so, and I know you mentioned at North Couchin, there wasn't any data attached to why or how those deaths happened, but it was related to heat, and I'm just wondering how a regional district or municipalities could help in those efforts of, like, say an apartment building would be really scorching hot, and can you, like, can we use that data to have incentives to have some sort of different cooling, cooling centers, or more cooling centers, like, so that's, thank you.
Dr. Waters?
Yeah, I think so much of our vulnerability to things like wildfire smoke or heat is out in the community, like, the deaths of people who died from the heat dome were in their homes in a lot of cases, and people who didn't have a lot of supports and didn't have abilities to cool within their homes, if we get more data at a community level, and we could ask questions such as, how do you heat your home, how do you cool your home, then we have an idea of where there are more vulnerable places or populations, and we can target some interventions in those areas, such as, you know, more outreach to just knock on people's doors and see how they're doing, or looking at things such as, you know, having air conditioners or whatnot put in certain locations.
Thank you, and I'm being cognizant of the time, and this is obviously very important information, and I will ask, because I think it would have been a perfect segue into the, I hope I've got the acronym right, the HARMs Initiative that's going on, and I don't know that we need to talk about it today, but I'd love to have some update, I think the Fraser Valley and the interior has already got programs, and we're looking to Island Health to bring those forward, can you share just a little bit about that, and then we'll go to a resolution for EAFC?
Yeah, so I think what you're referring to is the HARMs, the Heat Alert Response System?
HARMs, that's it, yeah.
Yeah, so we are starting some meetings now, looking at how the response happened last summer, and what we learned from that, to what we're rolling out next year, we set a threshold where we had a number of heat warnings that were met last summer, so there was four across the island region, none of them were heat domes like we had in 2021, but we're wondering, hmm, was the, how was the threshold, was it a little too low, like, what is the balance to let the community know we need to be paying attention and reaching out to people, but not creating, you know, the boy who cried wolf, like, you know, every time the temperature is going up, so we'll be taking a look at that, and actually, I just want to also say that in terms of the Heat Alert Response System, we're now looking at all the different ways that climate change affects our weather, and how can we set up better response in general, so right now, we're coming across some cold weather, and how do we set up places for people to have reduced impacts of the cold weather, and people are talking about, you know, this provincial response with the HARMs might be able to be, you know, we can look at it for cold, because it's a lot of the same people who are having the same conversations, so how can we set up more robust structures, because every time we're creating this, when we're in this situation, it's requiring a lot more effort than we need to be, it's not beneficial for anyone's mental health, if we know we're going to have more of these effects, how can we set up a more robust system beforehand?
Thank you for that, and it just happens, Mr. Wainwright's sitting in the back of the room there, and a person that you'd want to be coordinating with on that, so good timing, with that, I would see no further questions, we'd like to thank the three of you for coming today, thank you very much, good job. And I would turn to the committee and ask if someone would like to make a resolution that this be referred to staff and to come to an Electoral Area Services Committee, moved by Director Staples, seconded by Director Martman, any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed? The motion carries. Next delegation, Mr. Robbins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the next allegation for committee is from Environmental Response, Western Region of the Canadian Coast Guard.
Well, hi, this is Rita Chomakela, good morning, can you all hear me?
We can hear you, welcome.
Good, I do have a presentation, I'm not sure if you can see that up on your screen, I don't have it on my screen here.
Can you get a little closer to your microphone, or?
Um...
That's a little better.
Oh, a little bit better?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, is there a presentation up that you can view?
We're getting, Steph is looking, do we have this in our package?
Yes.
So, hang on, I'll just encourage the directors to look to their agenda package, it should be in there, and we can follow along.
If I may, Mr. Chair, are you able to share your screen, Rita?
Uh, I, it might take me a moment to do that.
Why don't you try that?
Actually, I'm not sure how to do that through, oh, yeah, hold on, I will open up my presentation, I will turn off my video, though, because it actually makes it difficult, and I freeze up when I share both, so I'll just turn that off, and you'll see my presentation shortly.
We can.
All right, I think it's showing the wrong screen, though, just a moment, I'm going to move the presentation over. It's actually this one. All right, so, good morning, I'm speaking to you from the unceded territory of the Quatlin, Matzqui, Ketsi, and Semiamu First Nations, which is in Langley, British Columbia, and I am a Senior Planning Officer with Canadian Coast Guard's Environmental Response Program. I'll be giving a brief background on response planning and the Georgia Strait Integrated Response Plan under which the Couchin Valley Regional District falls. Okay, oh, it's interesting, it's not, for some reason, my screen seems to have frozen up here, and it's not moving to the next slide. Sorry, my screen seems to have frozen here. Let's see if I refresh that. So I guess there's no way you can call up the presentation, because it seems to be not wanting to cooperate on my screen.
Rita, we've all got it on our computers, and I think that for sake of time, we can easily follow along, and perhaps if you just call next slide and what you would be looking at, then we can follow along on our, on our own computers.
Sure, I will do that. All right, so if you go on to the next slide, so the first slide was just the introductory slide. Okay, so after a bit of background, I'll talk about the Response Plan Network, the partners with whom we've collaborated to produce the Georgia Strait Area Plan, the plan itself in its current form, and the updates we are making to the plan, and then I'll finish with a brief overview of an incident that occurred in September within the CVRD. So, next slide. So this slide should be saying background, so it was the incident with the bulk carrier Meritasa in April 2015 that triggered the creation of area response plans. The Meritasa leaked approximately 2,800 liters of bunker sea fuel into English Bay, the response effort required the coordination of multiple response agencies and jurisdictions. A post-incident review led to recommendations, one of which was that area response plans be created, and this led to the creation of the Greater Vancouver Integrated Response Plan, also referred to as G-Verp, which became the baseline for the other response, area response plans for the BC coast. Next slide. So this graphic shows the spill response plans in place for spill preparedness and response, at its highest levels, there are the National Policies for Spill Preparedness and Response, and below that, the National Marine Spill's Contingency Plan defines the scope and framework within which the Canadian Coast Guard will operate to ensure response to marine pollution incidents. The Western Region Plan covers the waters of the BC coast out to Manitoba, the Yukon, and Northwest Territories, and it's, is based on the policy and guiding principles reflected in the national plan. So the area plans align with the framework set out in the Western Region Plan and are specific to the eight areas shown on the map. In the north, we have the north coast area, which is outlined in purple, we have Haidegway outlined in green, the central coast, which is the lighter yellow outline, and North Vancouver Island, which is outlined in gray, and in the south, we have the west coast Vancouver Island Plan area outlined in light pink, the Wanda Fuka area outlined in blue, and the Greater Vancouver in the darker yellow, and outlined in magenta/fuchsia color, we have the Georgia Strait area in which the CVRD falls. So below all our area plans in the triangle, we have local plans, which are tactical, and they include the geographic response strategies, First Nation and community plans. Next slide. So the area response plans are Coast Guard plans, however, plan development is inclusive of all response participants. The collaborative planning approach includes input from First Nations, other federal departments, provincial and local governments, health authorities, industry, and the response organization, which is the Western Canada Marine Response Corporation, which I'll just refer to as WCMRC in later slides. Plan development activities in our working groups have included, besides establishing the working groups, have included conducting workshops on specific topics to facilitate an increased common understanding of, for example, the Incident Command System, which is the incident management system that we use to manage a significant or potentially significant marine spill incident, the pollution notification process, spill mitigation and prevention, and we've also had a presentation on WCMRC's coastal mapping program, and also the meetings are to support the planning process. We've also used these working group meetings to inform the working group members of spill response training opportunities. Next slide. So this is a brief overview of what is in the 2021 version of the Georgia Strait Area Plan, the first thing to note is that it's a guide, it's not intended to be legally binding, and these four chapters are basically the educational pieces that are common to all the area plans, with the exception of part of the first chapter, which has a map of the area covered by the Georgia Strait Area Plan, and Section 2100, which describes the response capacity for the Georgia Strait Plan area. So rather than go through this and the next few slides in detail, you have copies of the presentation, and if you don't, you can email me at the email that I'll show at the end of the presentation, and I can send it to you, and also, in a later slide, I'll provide the link to the plan in the DFO library. Next slide. Whereas the chapters are mainly educational pieces, the appendices are where you will find information that's operationally useful for those responding to an incident in the Georgia Strait Plan area, this is where you'll find the information that the responders will use to help them manage the response, or to support the response, including geographically specific information, such as on the next slide. So next, so the logistics and resources appendix, for example, contains information specific to the Georgia Strait Plan area, such as communication options, where the hospitals and closest hyperbaric chambers are, which you need to know if you have dive operations where you will be, or dive and salvage operations, it also contains information on food services that could be accessed to feed an incident command post, potential incident command post sites, launch sites, marine fueling stations, and other information. Next slide. So for more detailed information, you'll find the complete 2021 Georgia Strait Plan at this link to the DFO's Waves Library. Next slide. For the 2022, 2023 version of the plan, we will be adding these annexes, although we're also looking at whether some sections within them that are in common for all the area response plans, if not the entire guideline, might be best placed a level up in the Western Region Plan. So looking at the volunteer management guidelines, although Coast Guard does not manage convergent volunteers, should an incident happen in the CVRD, we want to be able to direct those who come should an incident happen in the CVRD, we want to be able to direct those who come to the site to organizations in the CVRD who do manage volunteers. So, we've already, we've asked you to provide us with contact information for these organizations that we can either include in the Volunteer Management Guidelines, or, since these response plans will be made public, include that contact information in our, on our internal contact list if the contact information's not generic. We may also ask for this information during a coordination call, so it would be good if, for whoever would be on the call representing the regional district to have this information on hand. For the Liaison Officer Guidelines, we would like to include a list in the guidelines or on our internal contact list of representatives who would have authority to make decisions on all matters affecting their agency's participation at the incidents. For example, um, those could be representatives within social services, the fire department, the regional district emergency coordinator, public works, telephone company, non-government organizations such as environmental groups, et cetera. And these people would be reporting to the liaison officer.
Rita, this is Chair Morrison here. The 10 minutes is up, but I can certainly go to committee to, uh, to extend that. Are you nearing the end? I think I see six more slides in your package.
Yeah, probably need about another 10... Well, I can try to cut it down to five more minutes.
Let me, uh, go to committee and see if we've got, uh, appetite to extend your, uh, presentation period. Turn to committee, moved by Director Acton, seconded by Director Staples. All those in favor? Any opposed? Please proceed.
Okay, so just briefly, the Joint Information Center Guidelines are intended for communication representatives of the federal First Nations, provincial and local governments who have a mandate to provide information to the public during a response to marine pollution incidents. And, um... So, as I mentioned earlier, we're looking at, oh, sorry, next slide. As I mentioned earlier, we're looking at moving material, particularly the educational pieces, into the Western Region Plan. Uh, updates to the appendices will be mainly to the roles, responsibilities, and response capability of plan participants, and to the available resources and logistics for the Georgia Strait Plan area. And, uh, for each incident that requires activation of a response, we perform a post-incident analysis to create an a- after-action report. During recent incidents, there were some activities we needed to perform that were either new to us or not commonly performed, and we realized that having a written process in the area plans would be a benefit for future operations. So we've been keeping an open action tracker to add some of these processes to the area plans. So, um, I was asked to, uh, cover recent incidents. Um, and I've chosen the Octopus Point incident that occurred this past September. Coast Guard's Marine Communications Traffic System received a mayday from a fishing vessel taking on water. It ended up partially submerged on the rocks of the Octu- of Octopus Point near Maple Bay, as shown here in the photo. Uh, the fishing vessel discharged a small amount of diesel into the water, but had the potential to release a greater quantity, so provincial, municipal, and First Nation plan members were notified the same day. For those of you who are not familiar with the Incident Command Sis- um, oh, yeah, so backing up, the notification distribution list was provided by our ER planning, um, program, and was used to form a unified command and the environmental unit. I could go into describing a little bit about the Unified Command or Environmental Unit, but in the interest of time, I will go on to the next slide. So Coast Guard initially took command of the incident to stabilize the site, after which a contractor hired by the ship owner was able to assume operations to remove the vessel. In this slide, you can clear, you can see the sorbent boom on, just onto the inside of the, uh, yellow containment boom around the vessel. So operations were monitored by Coast Guard and members of local First Nations to ensure an appropriate response took place. With Coast Guard helping to remove the fuel, the contractor hired by the owner was able to remove the vessel from the marine environment for deconstruction at a suitable facility. And I just want to mention that we did have, um, First Nations were very much involved in Unified Command and in, uh, the environmental unit, uh, the environmental unit determines which sites are priority for protection, and we relied, um, partly also on the First Nations', um, knowledge of the area on which areas were priority to protect. So, yes, this was a collaborative effort, uh, between federal, provincial, First Nation, and local authorities. And, uh, next slide. So this was the notification process that we used during the Octopus Point incident, outlined here, and in the Georgia Strait Area Plan. So looking at the first two boxes, following a report of possible pollution, the Alerting Desk of our Regional Operations Center gathers the initial information, confirms whether the spill falls within Coast Guard's mandate, and if not, the information's passed on to the appropriate federal or provincial agency. Following this, the initial pollution report is sent out, and note that the initial report contains, is just the information is provided by the reporting party and has not been verified yet. So these unverified reports are distributed to federal and provincial partners, although in recognition of reconciliation, we are looking at expanding this distribution to First Nations at their request. The Coast Guard Duty Officer follows up on the initial report with a full assessment to confirm if the pollution is ship source, mystery source, or from an oil han- oil handling facility during the loading or unloading of oil to or from the ship, and if not, the incident is handed over to the appropriate provincial or federal agency. Okay, I'm just trying to shorten what I'm saying here. So when, when the information is validated, um, it's, it's usually done at the incident site by an environmental response officer, a First Nation partner, or supporting agency. And the Georgia Strait Area Plan includes an information gathering checklist that can be used for this assessment. Uh, Transport Canada's National Aerial Surveillance Program, or NASP, is often used to conduct overflights to assist with identifying the pollutant and estimating the amount. Sometimes during this initial se- assessment, we have found that what has been reported as oil is actually organic matter, so this verification process is very important. So once the spill is assessed to be significant, um, or potentially significant, a response is activated, and the notification goes out to First Nations and local authorities in the plan area. And that leads to a coordination call, and, um, the area plan, the Georgia Strait Area Plan lists in there who is to be contacted for this call. And the coordination call is also where decisions are made as to who would form Unified Command in the environmental unit. And, um, as the situation changes, the pollution reports are updated and continue to be sent out to the, um, Response Plan Participants. And the incident concludes when there's no more oil or threat of oil entering the environment. And, um, that's the end of the presentation. If you have any questions?
Thank you very much, Rita, and, uh, we'll ask if staff can pull down the screen so I can see everyone. And just a quick note, uh, the Cowichin Valley Regional District straddles the island, and I believe we, uh, do occupy the Wanda Fuka area as well, and if you could provide us with the link for that, that would be, uh, very helpful. And I turn to committee, are there any questions for our delegation? Lot of information to digest, I don't see any hands. Oh, I do, uh, Director Martman, please go ahead.
Thank you for your presentation. Uh, I was interested because, uh, recently we had a, a boat went into, um, down in the harbor of Ladysmith and, trying to figure out who do you call and under what jurisdiction would respond. So, uh, I was just looking at your, um, plan here, and I see in the first few pages it has a number of hotlines. So I thank you for that, and I'll distribute that.
Okay.
Very good. I do not see any further hands in the air. If, if we could get that other information forwarded to us, that would be wonderful. And, uh, I'd like to ask the committee to give you our, our virtual applause, and thank you for attending today.
You're very welcome. Thank you for having me.
Very much appreciated. Thank you, Rita.
Thank you.
Looking at the clock, everyone, I, we've been here for a little over an hour. Let's, uh, reconvene at exactly 10:45, and we're gonna have to, uh, hit the power curve here, because we've got a lot of business to take care of. When I hear we're live, we're gonna crack on. All right, everyone, we're live. We're gonna hit a different, our, another gear here, and we are, uh, I understand there is no correspondence. We are now to information, and, uh, Patrick, or Mr. Robbins, go ahead.
Uh, we have a PowerPoint presentation from the General Manager of Community Services Department. Uh, it's just to give a, an overview of the regional recreation history for, uh, committee.
Mr. Elzinga.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At the November 23rd board meeting, the board asked for an overview of the regional recreation initiative. Uh, so we're, uh, very proud to, uh, have this presentation today. It speaks to some of the history. It also talks to some of the principles moving, moving ahead. Um, before I go any further, I do want to acknowledge that this is a cross-organizational initiative, and my thanks to Legislative Services, Finance, the rest of the Corporate Services Team, Communications, and especially my recreation colleagues, because this was certainly a joint effort over a great period of time. So the overview, so the fair, equitable funding for Cowichin's publicly funded recreation facilities has been an issue since Fuller Lake was constructed in the late 1960s. And since the 1960s, seven other major recreation facilities have been constructed. Some of those facilities have a better correlation between taxpayers and users than others. And the ninth major facility, the most recently constructed, was the Cowichin Aquatic Center in 2008. North Cowichin and Duncan, prior to construction of the Cowichin Aquatic Center, sought other jurisdictions to contribute tax dollars to the facility. North Cowichin and Duncan said at the time that for areas where there was no tax support, residents would be subject to a higher admission fee. And Cowichin tribes at that time was the only jurisdiction to contribute funding. North Cowichin Duncan exempted Areas G, H, and Ladysmith from the higher admission fees because of their contributions to the Frank Jameson Community Center in Ladysmith. But residents of all other electoral areas and the Towneley Cowichin were subject to two-tiered fees to use the Cowichin Aquatic Center. Over the next few years, each jurisdiction, either individually or as part of a group, negotiated with North Cowichin and Duncan on a contribution to the Cowichin Aquatic Center to remove those two-tiered fees. Some areas' contribution was publicly approved, some were funneled through another CVRD function. Electoral Area E, Cowichin Station, Satelgonora, negotiated with North Cowichin and Duncan to have that initial contribution and public consent process to eliminate the two-tiered fee, and then to have a second public consent process to raise the contribution to appropriate levels. An alternate approval process was conducted in Electoral Area E in 2015. To raise that contribution, the alternative approval process failed. The results were reported to the CVRD Board in the fall of 2015. CVRD Board directed that a review of funding for recreation across the region be conducted. North Cowichin and Duncan chose not to reimpose two-tiered fees until that review had been concluded. The work was broken into four phases. Phase one was a large public engagement exercise to get input on the wants and needs of the community for recreation services now and into the future. Facility two, or Phase two was a facility use study. For the nine regionally significant facilities, we gained information on residents who used which facilities. And Phase three was the review of funding models. The Board was unable for a time to choose an appropriate alternate funding model. So Phase four was completed before return to Phase three. And Phase four was a regional recreation strategic plan to identify priorities and facility and amenity strategies. All of these reports can be found on the planyourcowichin.ca website. We return to Phase three, and in August of 2019, the Board passed a resolution to approve in principle funding nine regionally significant recreation facilities on the basis of the residency of use. Those facilities include the Cowichin Community Center, Cowichin Performing Arts Center, Cowichin Aquatic Center, Cowichin Lake Sports Arena, Carey Park, Shawanga Lake Community Center, the Cowichin Sportsplex, Fuller Lake Arena, and the Frank Jameson Community Center in Ladysmith. It should be noted that the nine facilities are owned and operated by different public entities, which does complicate governance. Five facilities are owned and operated by the CVRD. Three are owned and operated by municipal governments. One is owned by a municipality and operated by a not-for-profit society. The following assumptions and principles have been developed that underpin what needs to be done to make the new funding formula work. They're explained in the Frequently Asked Questions portion of that Plan Your Cowichin project site, but I'm just gonna go into these over the next few slides. Zero-sum result. So the new funding model, the usage-based funding model, would shift who pays into the recreation facilities. There is no intent in the model itself to change the overall level of funding, and all those budget discussions are a different decision. Debt, we consider debt. Taxpayers and jurisdictions that authorize debt for regionally significant recreation infrastructure need to assume that debt. While other jurisdictions can contribute to the operation of a specific recreation function, they will only participate in the funding of the debt associated with that function if they agreed to it initially. They can't be forced to participate in debt after the fact.
Could you repeat that, please, Mr. Elzinga?
Absolutely, absolutely. Let me know if I'm going too fast. Okay, so jurisdictions that authorize debt are the ones that need to assume it. While other jurisdictions can contribute to operation of a specific recreation function, they will only participate in the funding of debt if they agreed to it initially. They can't be asked to do it after the fact. Thank you. Funding now versus funding in the future. Committing to fund the operation of a specific recreation amenity should not obligate a jurisdiction to fund future changes to the facility or any future long-term debt. Any new debt requires new authorization. So let me give an example at this point. Let's say 10 years from now, three of our electoral areas would like to move ahead with, let's say, a new aquatic facility. The residents of those three areas would be responsible for construction costs and any costs related to debt. And those three areas would request the rest of the region to participate in the operating costs based on usage. Participation. All jurisdictions need to participate in the function for the new funding formula to work. The model falls apart if any jurisdictions in the region are not a part of it. This one's important about capital. Let's talk about capital. Operating a recreation facility also involves current capital. Maintaining the functionality of a facility includes those operating costs, but it also includes lifecycle items, replacement of small capital items, emergency capital outlays. If a roof starts to leak, or a piece of major equipment breaks down, and needs If a roof starts to leak or a piece of major equipment breaks down and needs to be replaced, the operator has little choice but to incur a capital cost that is required to keep the building operational. So operating budgets and short-term capital budgets are two sides of the same coin. Both are required to keep a current level of service. Both are included in the usage-based funding model. No changes to ownership of facilities are required, nor is any change necessary to the operating entity of any facility. Across BC, there are many examples of regionally significant recreation facilities that are funded by regional taxpayers but are not operated by the regional district. There are many examples where a regional district contributes to the operation of a facility which is owned and operated by a municipality or a not-for-profit society. As you can see in this slide, in October of 2020, the CVRD Board approved a referendum to seek electoral approval to implement the usage-based funding and that it be held in conjunction with elections in this year. Once that was done, to continue to move forward, we did another facility use analysis from last September 2021 through March of 2022. The averages of usage through this and the 2017-2018 study are being used to calculate impacts. The Board was presented with a snapshot of the financial implications. We are now on steps five and six with the creation of the new region-wide recreation funding and phasing in the new funding formula. So we're creating a new region-wide function and there is a limit set on the total funding, which allows for some variance, some emergency capital outlays. This new function, again, would be intended to replace current funding through existing functions and programs for that net zero overall effect. Implementing the funding process, the budget for each facility would be prepared by the operator, clearly identifying requisition amounts. The budget is then sent through to CVRD Finance and we're working our way through that now. Each of the new facilities requisition would be allocated based on the usage of the 13 jurisdictions and budgets are decided by the CVRD Board. So now let's talk about phasing. Because significant change in shifting to a new funding formula will cause some stress on some taxpayers from the old funding model to the new funding model, it's to be phased in over three years. In 2023, one-third of the net costs would be allocated on the basis of usage. Two-thirds based on the old sources of contributions. In the second year, 2024, two-thirds of the net cost would be funded on the basis of the usage model and one-third on the old model. And in the third year of the shift, 2025, and each year thereafter, all of the net costs should be apportioned on the basis of the new usage model. Collecting usage data and assigning residency to it is a significant undertaking. It does have costs attached. To track changes in the residency of use and updating the funding formula, a five-year data collection cycle would be adopted. Every five years, the residency of uses of the regionally significant recreation facilities would be collected in order to soften any significant changes from one data collection cycle to the next. There'd be a rolling average of the past three data collection cycles. So until a third set of data is collected in 2027, for the next five years, we would be using the average of the 2017 and 2022 data collection. We talked about this having a built-in review period and there is. There is a review of the new function in six years' time. So my acknowledgement to Director Segal, I kept these slides in the presentation just as an example. So I just arbitrarily chose Electoral Area A just to show some of the impacts. And as the Board is aware, some areas have increased impacts and some have decreased impacts. So this is an example for Electoral Area A. This was presented to the Board on May the 11th and is a snapshot if facilities in 2019, the last year pre-COVID, we wanted to make this the most accurate budget as possible, if the budgets in 2019 had been based on usage. And again, please note that the usage is the average between the 2017 and 2022 data. So in 2019, the total tax requisition for the Cary Park Recreation Center was 2.9 million. Of that, Area A paid just over 705,000. We've determined Electoral Area A's usage of the Cary Park Recreation Center is 19.45%. Under the usage-based model, Electoral Area A should have paid 571,000 and saved 134,000 on their contribution to the Cary Park Recreation Center. A second example for Area A, the Couch and Aquatic Center. In 2019, the total tax requisition for the Couch and Aquatic Center was 2.9 million. Of that, Electoral Area A paid just over 28,000. We've determined Electoral Area A's usage of the Couch and Aquatic Center is 5.4%. Under the usage-based model, Electoral Area A should have paid 156,000, an increase of just over 127,000. And a third one, the Couch and Community Center. In the old model, Electoral Area A does not pay for this facility, even though they make up 4.3% of the users. This means, under the usage-based model, Electoral Area A would have contributed 158,000 in 2019. For the nine facilities, in 2019, Electoral Area A's expenditure based on usage would have exceeded the amount actually paid. In 2019, Electoral Area A paid 797,000 to the nine regionally significant recreation facilities. Under a usage-based model, Electoral Area A would have paid 1.122 million, an increase of 325,000. What does all of that mean for the individual residents of Electoral Area A? It means an increase in taxes of approximately $14.66 for every $100,000 of home assessed value. This means that as an average home in Electoral Area A is assessed at 881,000, their current annual cost for recreation services is around 317. Under the new funding model, that annual cost would be 446, an increase of $129 per year. Please note, we showed the full impact over three years. So that $129 increase for the average house will be phased in by approximately $43 per year. Note both current costs, usage-based costs, again, are based on 2019. I do emphasize that to best represent normal expenditures. Percentages of use by jurisdiction are based on the average between the 2017 and 2022 data collection cycles. That's the story for Electoral Area A. I could tell the story for any electoral area or municipality and, in fact, we have. There are 13 virtual presentations on the planyourcouchand.ca website, individual to each area. You can go there anytime and see what that means for you individually. So those last four slides will be pertaining to your area. Mr. Chair, hopefully I went through that fairly quickly, but I'm available for any questions.
You did and thank you for the fulsome and succinct report. And I'm just, I see you, Director Abbott. Given that we have eight staff reports and closed session and some items that are critical to go to the Board, we could take a question or two. Obviously, there's a lot of material available and Mr. Elzinga is available. So if we could hold our questions or go offline with Mr. Elzinga, that would be helpful for today. I'm willing to take a couple, a couple of questions. So Director Abbott.
I'm just interested in how much faith you can put in the usage stats that you pick up in 17, 22, and in the future.
Mr. Elzinga.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through to Director Abbott. So the usage studies were conducted with four methods. And so the, some of our facilities have memberships and so we actually have the street addresses of those memberships. And so I'm 100% confident in that method. Number two is registered programs. If anybody signs up for a course, you know, to learn how to play guitar, whatever it happens to be, we have that program information. I'm 100% certain of that data. The third one is drop-in use. So we have drop-in skating, drop-in swimming at the Couch and Aquatic Center. To do that, we had a consultant hire a bunch of students who intercepted people at various times at the door to ask their street address, where are they from? And so it's not a foolproof system. It's statistically accurate. We had to extrapolate that data to, to, to put that in. And the fourth method is rentals. So we have to go to our user groups, to minor hockey, to figure skating, and ask them for their membership data for their street addresses. We got a lot. We didn't get them all. And so again, we had to, we think it's statistically accurate and we're confident the numbers represent the usage, but those are the differences in the four collection methods.
Director Segal, and I'll say to close.
Thank you, Chair. You mentioned governance, but I'm, no mention of the commissions. I'm wondering if the local commissions are going to continue.
Mr. Elzinga.
It's a great question. Thank you. And we're moving through some next steps around that. So if I can just digress for one second, the next step for me is talking about reserve funds and what we're doing with that. And so we're working with Finance, not only with the CVRD, but with member municipalities, on how we're gonna handle reserve funds and make a presentation to the Board potentially in January. So the governance piece comes right after that. And so in, I believe it was 2019, the Board made a decision to say, let's have governance done by the Community Services Committee at the time, or Committee of the Whole. And the Board revisited that and said, we'd like to have another look at that. And they asked staff for a report on some sub-regional or local representation and that it be done by thresholds. And so staff presented a report in May of this year and so it came back to the Board in June. And the decision was to defer that until after the election and the referendum. So there's no real urgency on that. We're having some discussions around budget first. And so we are going with the existing governance model until told otherwise. But I would anticipate February, March-ish, that we will be bringing significant discussion to the Board's attention around commissions and governance.
Director Stone.
I just want to make it clear to all the Directors, new and old, that each of these will be sort of bitten off in chunks and we'll have time to dive into the specific issues as the process moves along. So don't feel like this is thwarting the ability to give input, but we'll have those area-specific topics to dive into as, as we progress. Thanks.
Yes, thank you. And just thinking about the report that Mr. Elzinga just described, it seemed to me that North Couch and was gonna be spread pretty thin because they're gonna have to be on just about every commission because of their usage. So with that, I want to thank you, Mr. Elzinga. Excellent presentation. I want to encourage Directors to go to the website that, that he provided with us. And, and if there's a need to have further discussion around other items, Mr. Elzinga is available. So thank you, Mr. Elzinga.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Next item, Mr. Robbins. Oh, I got this one. We'll go to Director Stone. He, yes, please.
Yeah, so I, very high level, I'm in discussion with Allison, the Vice Chair, and, sorry, Director Nicholson, and Mr. Robbins and staff. We came up with a high-level sort of terms of reference for a Governance Select Committee. We do have a legislative requirement to review the Code of Conduct updated before, I think, six months from election date or swearing in, one or the other. But the date term for the, the committee set as February is intentional to be able to achieve that result. You'll see some other points there, but it's, I think, necessarily broad because even in discussions with some Directors, we've thought of other topics we may be able to cover. But that's a high level of those topics. Also allows us to complete our work, make recommendations to the Board for, in time for any budget implications, especially around remuneration policies. So what I'm asking for is the Board's support in establishing that committee. As far as determining discussion, if it's a desire of every member of this Board or Committee to be on that committee, we could look at maybe including that as a, as a subject, an ongoing subject for Committee of the Whole. Or more functionally and probably more effective would be a smaller subsection of the Board, maybe seven Directors or eight or nine. I guess we want an odd number. But working to consensus, hopefully, for recommendations to the Board. But, and perhaps we could even start a little bit earlier on our Wednesdays before Committee of the Whole or squeeze it in when our schedules allow. But yeah, I think that's just the cover. Open for questions or discussion, also respecting the time on our agenda today.
Question for you, Director Stone. Are we wanting to have this before the Board this afternoon so that the preliminary work can begin on this? What's the timeliness around this?
I, I think it would be better if we want to complete the work in two months, essentially. And there is a fairly substantial list of things to do. You know, I think we'll probably find some, some agreement on the key points. But the sooner we get it established, the sooner we can start to work in the new year and get it done, especially around the Code of Conduct.
Thank you for that. And I noticed that there, there isn't a resolution but, that it be recommended to the Board. But if we could have somebody work on that, and I'll go to Director Wilson next.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'd be quite happy to, to serve on this particular committee as well. One of the things that I do have concerns about, obviously, as I've, as you all know, is the level of increases that have been talked about for CVRD Directors. Given the present circumstances, those, those concerns that I have are even greater. And one of the things I will point out at this stage is the fact that the BC MLAs yesterday refused any kind of raise on the kind of levels that we're talking about. I will be addressing those concerns if I am on that committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions on the formation of the Select Committee? Anything further? Can we have a resolution referring, recommending this to the Board for this afternoon?
Yeah, that'd be recommended to the Board on December 14th. It's my mom's birthday. That, that the Governance Select Committee be established for completion of the tasks outlined in the Terms of Reference by the end, last Board meeting of February 2023.
We have a second, or by Director Abbott, any discussion on that resolution? I see none. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? I see none opposed. The motion carries. Mr. Robbins, R2, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. R2 is Report from Emergency Management Division with regards to Regional Emergency Management Local Authority Agreement between the CVRD and Member Municipalities. There is a recommendation for the Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Wainwright. Do you have something to present?
Sorry, still getting, still getting the pace of the technology here. No presentation today. The agreement for 2022 through 2024 is in the package. But here, happy to answer any questions or concerns from the, the group.
Thank you, Director Stone. Moved and seconded. I have a quick question just on the, I want the resolution to go forward. You've got forewarning on this, the opportunity for the Electoral Area Services Committee Chair to be included as one of the policy committees. I think that's quite critical. Any thoughts or comments on that?
Yeah, so I, I appreciate the, I saw the conversation go back and forth between you and Clayton. Definitely, we're talking about the policy group, which is the Operational Advisory Policy Group during an emergency. And the composition of that really is at the, the will and determination of this group here. The legislation tells us that we need to have the most senior official or designate, so the Chair, but any additional members that, that this group requires or would like to recommend, we can definitely include that in our own way of doing business moving forwards.
Thank you. And just a heads up for the, for the Committee, it was noted that it could conceivably be the entire policy committee could be municipal directors and, and no input from an electoral area director. So staff have told us that that can certainly be remedied. So with that, any further discussion on this item? It's been duly moved and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? None? Any opposed? None opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Robbins.
Mr. Chair, R3, the report from Strategic Initiatives Division. This was one item that we had hoped that the committee would actually defer to January. We have some staff that are unavailable to be with you today to present this particular item.
Move to refer to the next meeting, seconded by Director Stone. Any discussion? All those in... We're referring. Because it's a region-wide policy. I will now call the question on this being referred to the next Committee of the Whole meeting. All in favor? Any opposed? None opposed, the motion carries. Mr. Robbins, R4.
R4 is a report from the Deputy Corporate Officer, Legislative Services Division, with regards to draft bylaw number 4469, Board Procedure Amendment Bylaw. This particular bylaw is a bit of a catch-up. If the board recalls, previously, we informed with regards to certified census data that the voting strength and the number of directors around this board has changed. This bylaw just basically catches up to that certification by the province.
We have a resolution before us. Would you read the resolution, please?
That'd be recommended to, sorry, that'd be recommended to the board on December 14th, 2022, that CVRD bylaw number 4469, Regional Board Procedures Amendment Bylaw 2022, be forwarded to the board for consideration of three readings and adoption.
Moved by Director Stone, seconded by Director Toparowski. Any discussion on this item? Director Acton.
Thank you. My question is just around Board Procedures bylaw in general, since we're a new board, will we be reviewing it?
I'll get Director Stone to answer that.
It's in the Governance Select Committee's Terms of Reference, to review the board and committee policies and procedures.
Director Abbott?
Will we get more space in this room?
We should bring that up at committee. Any further discussion on this resolution? Everybody's clear on it? All those in favor? Are there any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. R5, Mr. Robbins.
R5 is for the committee's information, is a report from Environmental Services Division with regards to partnership for water sustainability in British Columbia.
Who do we have from staff presenting on this? Or are we having a presentation? I see... Director Stone?
So this is, I thought it was a great report, but again, thinking of timeliness, and this hasn't got any really urgency or requirement for resolution, so if board members do want to dig into it, remember we forward that to the Committee of the Whole in the new year, but it was a good report that kind of catches us all up on where we are in those partnership initiatives. But I don't believe there's any decision required out of it today.
Director Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, no decision at the moment, but I would like, if I can, get some clarification on point number three, which is share and collaborate, work directly with residents to help them understand the benefits of water stewardship and how they can contribute. I'd like to know exactly what that means and what they intend to do as far as that's concerned.
So we're now on R5, and so I looked at the committee, I understand Director Wilson's desire to have clarity on that specific item. Do we want to dive into this and then, or just take the one question and refer it? What's the pleasure of the committee?
I'm quite prepared to wait until later, as long as I can get a response on that. I'd just like the question out there. Thank you.
Ms. Miller, you've got that question noted?
I do, indeed. Thank you.
Thank you. So motion to refer this to the next Committee of the Whole, moved by Director Stone, seconded by Director Staples. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Are there any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. R6.
Mr. Chair, R6 is a report from the Recycling and Waste Management Division with regards to Amendment Bylaw number 4445, tipping fee adjustment. There is a recommendation before the committee with a recommendation for the board consideration for later this afternoon.
I gather we might have some discussion on this one. I'll go to...
Mr. Chair, I'm a bit confused what we're discussing. You're like, I thought we were just on R5, but it was described as Water Sustainability Building BC, which is R6.
You just referred that. You're not on R6.
Sorry. Yeah, yeah, like, the tipping fee adjustment is R7, and I...
Yeah, compared to if you go...
Well, we have a discrepancy between digital and the printed version, so can we have clarification? We have dealt with the water sustainability one, which I have, and the printed copy is R5.
Yeah, in Prime Gov, it's also R5. I think maybe the public agenda has something incorrect there.
Mr. Chair, there was just a reordering, reordering of the numbers, and so your Prime Gov, which is the most recently updated, may be different than anything that was perhaps printed for you or provided to you yesterday.
Okay, so the item we're on is the recycling and waste management in regards to tipping fees. R6.
Mr. Chair, just to be totally clear then, so the report on the Environmental Services Division regarding Couch and River Flood, post-flood assessment, that's now off the agenda?
No, it's later on, R8.
All right. Okay, now everything's clear. Thank you.
Excellent. Let's deal with garbage and tipping fees. Mr. Robbins. And this is one of the timely ones.
Correct. I'm just trying to bring up the report here and see what staff member is available to speak to it.
Mr. Boyson. No?
It's Mr. Stevens.
Mr. Stevens, please. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you. So yeah, we're just looking for a recommendation on the, to the board, to review the documents or the staff report, and to adopt the policies or the bylaws requested.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Are there questions for staff on this? I think the direction that we had at last committee was, or maybe at the board, was that we wanted to avoid the increase of the minimum fee tipping at the scale from reduce or not approve a move of $2 up to $9 to keep it at 7. I think that's reflected in the report, there's a cost associated with it, and we'll be having that discussion more as the budget is discussed. So we do have a resolution here. Does anyone have any questions? Do you want to move the resolution, Director Nicholson? Thank you. Director Stone is second. Any questions, discussion, Director Acton?
Thank you. I don't have the report open, it'll take a couple minutes, but I noticed that, you can't hear me? I noticed that the universal garbage is pushed out quite far, I can't remember, it was like 2026, and my question is like, why is it taking so long when I was actually told that the CVRD could roll this out in two weeks if we had to?
Mr. Stevens, or Mr. Boyson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, Director Acton. Sorry, I'm not 100% clear on your question.
It said that the universal garbage, I'm sorry, I don't have it right open right now, but it was 2026, it was quite, it's a few years away where we made that decision for universal garbage, I think it was in 2018. So it's taking a really long time, and you know, there's great angst in my community over this, and so, you know, we'd like it to have definite dates when we were told that it was going to happen much sooner. And yeah, I guess I'm just, I'm just wondering why, why CVRD is not acting on this quicker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to Director Acton. So we are working on a plan for curbside collection, we're hoping to have a report to the board and update this early spring with regards to the three-stream curbside collection throughout the region. Unfortunately, I don't have a lot of information in front of me regarding the three-stream curbside collection, as I was just referring to the tipping fee amendment for 2023. Thank you.
Thank you. And Director Stone, in regards to the resolution?
Yeah, and I'm supporting it. Thanks to staff for sort of holding the line at $7. I know it will have implications, especially moving into subsequent years, so we need to discuss it more fully, but I need to stress Director Acton's comments that we, the three-stream pickup will alleviate a lot of these issues, it will not require people to expend the greenhouse gases and extra expense of carrying their garbage to a facility. So we can kill two birds with one stone if we could get three-stream online, so the sooner the better.
Thank you, Director Stone. I wholeheartedly agree. I think that a lot of work went into the solid waste management plan, or the most recent update, and I think this, a number of us on this board want to see implementation as soon as we can. So with that, have we had the, we've had the resolution moved and seconded, I believe? Call question, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? None opposed, the motion carries. Next item, Mr. Robbins.
Next item is R7, is the, a report from the Finance Division with regards to revised operating reserve fund policy. There is a recommendation before committee.
We have staff in the room, I believe this was a pretty straightforward item, it's reserve fund policy in regards to one function, I don't have it open in front of me, but...
328.
Yeah, so would we, does someone want to move the resolution? Moved and seconded, could you read the resolution for us, please, Mr. Robbins?
That'd be recommended to the board, that revised operating reserve fund policy be approved.
And was this one that needs to go to the board this afternoon? Is it timely? Nope, great. Everybody clear on the resolution? You've read the report? Call a question, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? None opposed, the motion carries. R9. Mr. Robbins.
R8.
R8, sorry.
R8 is the report from Environmental Services with regards to Couch and River Post-Flood Assessment. There is a two-part recommendation before committee.
Director Stone?
I would move the recommendation.
We have a seconder. Anybody have any questions for the, for staff on this item? It's a fulsome report. I see none. I shall call a question, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. What's next, Mr. Robbins?
We're moving through the agenda, there is no unfinished business under item 9, no new business under item 10, which moves us to item 11 of the committee agenda, which is question period. We have no one that I'm aware of online that is wishing to ask a question of committee. We turn to the gallery to see if there's anybody that wishes to ask you a question.
Is there one, anyone in the gallery? No, thank you, Ms. Kaufman. Excellent. So with that, I want to applaud the committee on their speediness in which we burned through those, that was excellent, I think it was fulsome, and with that, we need a resolution, Mr. Robbins, to resolve and to close?
Correct. There's a four-part resolution to close the committee, or sorry, three parts, under the Community Charter, Section 90, with respect to items under litigation, proposed land disposition, a motion to close, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Director Stone, seconded by Director Toparowski. Any discussion? All those in favor? Are there any opposed?
Yes, I'd ask that you log out, and you can log into the separate link that we provided you for the close session.
We will get...